Good evening, Chair. Cause order legislative session day twenty-four dash zero thirty-one. I would ask you all to join us standing with the player for the pledge and followed by the opening prayer by Councilman Pennon.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today with grateful hearts, seeking your guidance and wisdom as we gather to serve our community. We thank you for the privilege of leadership and the opportunity to work together for the common good. Grant us clarity in our discussions, compassion in our decisions, and humility in our actions. Help us to listen to one another with open minds and open hearts, always keeping the needs of those we serve at the forefront of our deliberations. Bless the members of this council, our staff, and all who contribute to the betterment of our community. We ask for your protection over our county and its residents, and for the strength and unity to face challenges with courage and resolve. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Counsel, I want to express our deepest condolences to the Sodles and Boyle family over the loss of Patrick Boyle. And as a result of that, we are going to move our agenda a little quick this evening so Ms. Sodles can leave and be with her family. So, agenda number four, presentation of proclamations, we have none. Five, consideration of petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations. Council appointment. Council Vice President may have a motion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Pennon?
I move to reappoint Councilman Tony Jan Giordano. Did I do pretty good, Tony? I wrote it down phonetically to help me, to continue in his role as Council Vice President.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pennon. It's been moved and seconded to approve Councilman Jan Giordano for another year as Council Vice President. Is there any discussion? If I may just briefly, I just want to thank him for being available as I need him. He always makes himself available, and I appreciate that very much. Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Pennon?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
I guess I have to vote aye. Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being five votes in affirmative, one absent, and one vacant, the appointment is hereby approved. Police Accountability Board Chair may have a motion, please.
Council President, I move to approve the appointment of Teresa Walters as Chair of the PAB.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. It's been moved and seconded to approve Ms. Walter as the Chair. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Pennon?
I just want to acknowledge Chief Walters, my admiration and respect for her. She's one of the best leaders I've ever worked for, but because of my position, I will have to abstain for this vote.
Very good. I also want to comment on Ms. Walters for her outstanding time as Chief in Havity Grace and as a Deputy Sheriff. I also want to thank Judge Lambek for his work on the PAB. Also want to recognize Sheriff Geller in the audience and Colonel Davis in the audience. We appreciate all that you do. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Pennon?
Abstain.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being four votes in affirmative, one abstention, one absent, one vacant, the appointment is hereby approved. Counsel, at this time, may I have general consent to move to items ten, eleven, and thirteen, and come back to six thereafter?
Subbing.
Thank you. Ten, introduction and consideration of amendments. Amendment seven to Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-three, impact fees. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Amendment seven to Bill twenty-four dash zero three-three.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pennon. It's been moved and seconded to approve Amendment seven to Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-three. Ms. Sodles?
Council President, thank you. I just wanted to make everyone aware that this amendment just increases the percentage structure is increased on an altered or amended building permit application that was submitted prior to the effective date of this bill. Before the current impact fee would be applied and assessed, this increase the percentage from five to twenty-five percent before the current impact fee would apply. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Bennett?
I plan to vote no on Amendment seven. Since it was introduced, I have not received any communication from the public at large in favor of this amendment, but I have received communication from constituents against this amendment, along with the letter we received from the County Executive sharing his concerns with this amendment. So with that in mind, I plan to vote no on Amendment seven.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Pennon?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
No.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
No.
All right, there being three affirmative, two negative, one absent, one vacant, the Amendment seven to Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-three is denied. Mr. Jan Giordano, please read Amendments eight through ten for Bill twenty-four dash thirty-three.
Introduced by Council President Vincenti and Council Members Pennon and Boyle Sodles, Amendment eight, on the title page in the seventeenth line of the title paragraph after Act, insert to require the County Executive to submit a report to the County Council containing certain information related to the development impact fee. Amendment number nine, on page six after line nine, insert the following. Section two, and be it further enacted, that the County Executive shall submit to the County Council on March first, 2027, a report containing the following information. One, the effect the development impact fee as established under this Act has had on the number and type of residential building permits issued. Two, an update on the percentage increase to the per-square-foot construction cost as established by the Maryland Interagency Commission on School Construction since the enactment of this Act. Three, an update on the status of any proposed or adopted state legislation to increase the statutory cap of the Hartford County Development Impact Fee. Four, the total amount of development impact fee revenue collected based on this Act. Five, a list of school capacity projects, including amounts per project and debt service the development impact fee is funded under this Act. Six, an explanation as to how school capacity projects funded with the development impact fee have decreased overcrowding in the schools. And seven, a list of the current jurisdictions with school development impact fees and the amount of those fees.
Thank you.
Number ten, Amendment number ten, on page six in line ten, strike two and substitute three.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we're going to go ahead and consider these amendments due to the timely vote for the bill itself. May I have a motion, please?
Council President, I move to approve Amendments eight through ten.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve Amendments eight through ten to Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-three. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Pennon?
Any initiative, you should have a planning meeting to establish the goals and the expectation, which was done collectively through the work group and the legislative process. And following any initiative, you should always have a post-debrief to evaluate the measurables, the impact, the good and the bad. This is the same for any public-funded grant or agency. This is also the same for the community advisor boards when community members want to know the current situation is what is being done to mitigate certain issues, whether it's public safety or not. These impact fees are complex and could very possibly be positive or could have unintended consequences in our community. The amendments I have introduced provide an evaluation and the implementation of increased impact fees, such as how it has affected the permit process, how much has increased in revenue, what is the revenue being used for, and what is the direction of the impact fees through state legislation and the escalators built in, along with what is the status of other jurisdictions. Information and follow-up is good, and having data is good, and we should always be well-informed about the progress of legislative initiatives, and that's why these amendments were introduced. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Bennett?
I plan to support these three amendments. It's very similar to what we did with the livability code, I believe, in making sure that there's follow-up communication by March of 2027. To some degree, there will be a new council in this chamber, and whoever they are, it's important that they know about this and how it's working, you know? None of us who are up here tonight were here in 2004, 2005, when this work was initiated, and so making sure that history is known to help support future councils in continuing this work is important, and I think the more we can get this kind of reporting done, the better we can do our job as councils.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Pennon?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being five votes in affirmative, one absent, one vacant, Amendments eight through ten to Bill twenty-four dash thirty-three are hereby approved. Eleven, call for final reading of Bills, Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-three, impact fees as amended, may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-three as amended.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bennett, thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-three as amended. Is there any discussion? Mr. Jan Giordano?
So, I want to thank the work group that worked on this. I know we went back and forth, they looked at, we looked at a different model, but we weren't able to get some of that data, so I know by one of the amendments we're going to look at down the road, that'll let us look at the square footage. But I do remember twenty-plus years, I guess it's probably about twenty years ago, when impact fees were put on houses that were being built in Hartford County. The people that were moving in here or buying a house really didn't blink at that. It didn't stop houses from being built, developments from being built, so I think this is good that we're finally going back and revisiting this and looking to change this. Something hasn't been changed in all those years, so that's how I feel about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. Mr. Bennett?
I'll just add to that, as the Board of Ed liaison for the County Council, I attended last night's Board of Ed meeting, and one of the points of discussion was the local ask for capital projects, and it's a long list of capital projects that for many years have been denied or delayed due to lack of funding to adequately meet those needs. So updating the impact fee really supports them in being able to keep our children safe, to keep our children in adequately sized spaces, and to support the people who support the children. So I think it's long past due we do this, and I'm glad that we're doing it now.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Pennon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to thank the work group for all your work on this. I know each member is very, very passionate. Now, on the surface, I think everybody knows I'm not in favor of raising fees through or taxes, but with that said, I know the importance, I understand the importance. I understand the need of the schools and the voice of the constituents. I have been and will remain a large advocate for public education. That is one of the main reasons I have considered this legislation for increase. One very important effect of this bill is I'd like to see more school funding, and I'm not just talking about paying down debt services. This is an impact fee to help reduce capacity, so we should see increased funding and investment in our schools to help with that. I also understand that many constituents have expressed interest and support for this legislation, therefore I will vote in favor of this legislation, but in doing so, need to see tangible evidence, and I look forward to that evidence being presented in two years. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pennon, and I too, as a member of the committee, want to thank everyone for their patience. It took a long time to get us to where we're at, but we're here and moving forward. And with that, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Pennon?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being five votes in affirmative, one absent, one vacant, Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-three, impact fees as amended is hereby approved. Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-four, zoning chapter two sixty-seven dash thirty-three signs, may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-four.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pennon. It's been moved and seconded to approve Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-four. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Pennon?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being five votes in affirmative, one absent, one vacant, Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-four, zoning chapter two sixty-seven dash thirty-three signs is hereby approved. Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-five, Cable Franchise Renewal Agreement Verizon, may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-five.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pennon. It's been moved and seconded to approve Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-five. Is there any discussion? I want to thank Ms. Alge for the time and effort that she put forward to bring this to fruition. Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Pennon?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being five votes in affirmative, one absent, one vacant, Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-five, Cable Franchise Renewal Agreement Verizon is hereby approved. Mr. Marshak, if you just bear with me a second, we're going to go to B, reconsideration of vetoed Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-one, hotel occupancy tax, may I have a motion?
What number is that? Council President, I move to approve the reconsideration and override of vetoed Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-one.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pennon. Been moved and seconded to reconsider the vetoed Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-one. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
I'm sorry, Mr. Jan Giordano?
So, I had some concerns on this bill. I did myself and Council President. We had two meetings with Jay Ellambi. My concerns were some of the postings on Facebook by a certain outside consultant that I did not appreciate, a bunch of other things that were on there. I did look at in detail the financial reports of the last couple of years. Once they were sent to me, I did ask for even more detail on the financial statements to break down where the money was being spent and how it was being spent. Satisfactorily, these were answered. Also, they did remove that certain consultant who is no longer being hired by Visit Hartford, so it did take care of the concerns that I had. So thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Bennett?
I'd just like to echo that I shared those same concerns with Jay and had a conversation about those same issues to make sure that was addressed, and for me, it's just about responding to what I hear from the people of Havity Grace that I serve and their desire to see this done, so that is why I'm moving forward on voting yes.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Pennon?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being five votes in affirmative, one absent, one vacant, the veto override of Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-one, hotel occupancy tax is hereby approved. Now, Mr. Marshak, thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Council President.
Thirteen unfinished business, withdrawal Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-eight, Solid Waste Management Plan, and I also, at this time, will also introduce Steve again too, so whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Council President and Council Members, to introduce myself again. Timothy C. Marshak, Assistant County Attorney, speaking tonight to request that Council President withdraw Bill number twenty-four dash zero three-eight, the ten-year Solid Waste Management Plan, and request that the bill be reintroduced during the next legislative session on December tenth. The purpose of this request is to ensure that certain notice requirements set forth in section nine dash five zero three of the Environment Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland are satisfied. These requirements include that notice of a public hearing, along with a summary of this ten-year plan, be published fourteen days prior to the public hearing, as well as a fourteen-day prior notice be given to municipalities affected by the plan. After discussions with the County Council Attorney, we both agree that a revised plan summary that highlights the changes from the previous ten-year plan would be best to satisfy this notice requirement, which was then prepared and provided by the Department of Public Works and is now ready for publication. The Department of Public Works and I will coordinate the required notice to the municipalities when the new bill is introduced, and the County Council Attorney and I have had the opportunity to discuss this request, and both agree that this is the best course of action to again ensure that these notice requirements pursuant to the Environment or Code are met.
Thank you, Tim, for that explanation. I think it's important for the citizens to hear from you of why that's being withdrawn, so thank you. Counsel, if no one has any objection, I'd like to bring Steve Overbay up and congratulate him, let him give us a little brief synopsis here of what he'll be doing in the future.
Good evening and thank you, Council President, Members of the Council. Steve Overbay, first day back here in Hartford County. Had an extensive career here previously, and got an opportunity to meet and know many of you through that time, but very pleased to be here in support of the County Executive and be a liaison to this council. I'll also be serving a role in the Office of Economic Development and supporting some initiatives there, so very pleased to be back here in Hartford County. Excited to see many of the great projects that are already underway and that this council is considering, and I will very much look forward to working with you and making sure that both the needs of the citizens, the administration, and this council are met equally.
Well, speaking for myself, Steve, it's a pleasure to see you back in Hartford County. I look forward to working with you, had great years of working with you in the past, and look forward to the future as well. Counsel, anybody? Mr. Jan Giordano?
I'm going to echo Council President Vincenti, and glad that you're back. I worked with you before, so you're always energetic, enthusiastic, best for Hartford County. I know, I'm sorry Cecil County didn't keep you, but I'm glad we got you back, so welcome back. Thank you.
Many thanks.
Thank you. Also, Mr. McCord, I don't know whether you had anything to add or not.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Steve, we look forward to seeing you again here soon.
Very much looking forward to it.
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate it. Yes, appreciate it. We'll move on to item number six, special presentations, we have none. Seven, approval of minutes, public hearing November nineteenth, 2024, legislative day twenty-four dash zero thirty, November nineteenth, 2024. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved. Agenda number eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions. Mr. Jan Giordano, please read in Resolution zero four zero twenty-four and zero four one twenty-four.
Resolution zero forty dash twenty-four, MS four Financial Assurance Plan, 2024, as introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the County Executive, a resolution providing for the approval of the Financial Assurance Plan, a copy of which is attached hereto for the Hartford County National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, Phase One Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Permit, and for submission of the plan to the Maryland Department of the Environment for its review. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, January seventh, 2025, at seven PM in these council chambers. Resolution zero forty-one dash twenty-four, Economic Development Opportunity Loan Fund to MGT Holdings LLC, as introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the County Executive, a resolution to authorize a loan through Economic Development Opportunity Loan Fund to MGT Holdings LLC in the amount of $200,000 for the purpose of renovating and developing office space located at 909 South Main Street, Bel Air, Maryland, 2014, to support Golden Rule Health Services, Inc., trading as Bright Star Care of Bel Air, Maryland, and creating additional employment opportunities to provide that such loan be made upon such terms and conditions with such security and interest rate which may be approved by resolution of the County Council of Hartford County, Maryland. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, January seventh, 2024, at seven PM in these council chambers.
Twenty twenty-five.
January seventh, 2025, at seven PM in these council chambers.
Thank you. Introduction of bills, there are none. Eleven enrollment of bills, Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty-three as amended, and Bills twenty-four dash zero thirty-four and twenty-four dash zero thirty-five are certifies the text finally passed. Agenda number fourteen, we have none. Seventeen, comments and input from attending citizens?
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Agenda sixteen, business from council members. Mr. Bennett, we'll start with you.
Hello, good evening, everybody. It's been a busy few weeks. I was very lucky, along with Pat, Tony, Jim, and then some of our staff, Tara and Sam, to attend the grand opening of the Hartford Community College Workforce Training Center at Waters Edge, which is in District F, a beautiful space with a lot of opportunities for people to grow in career training and to rise in their employment. So it's very exciting to see all that hard work from Hartford Community College come to life in Waters Edge, and for Waters Edge to really become an educational hub with that and the Discovery Center, there's a lot going on there now. I also attended the Hartford County Public Schools Budget Town Hall to hear from Dr. Bolson on the current budget process and what's going on with HCPS, and the Susquehanna Hose Company rededication and open house, which Council President was also at, which it was really great to see that space and see all the work that they've done, to also talk with some of their members about future capital projects that they need support on. That same day, I attended, along with Council President, the Havity Grace Oyster Feast, which is always a great event, supporting some of the local nonprofits in Havity Grace and being with the community. I've met with the Hartford County Sheriff's Deputies Union and along with Governor Moore's staff in the past few weeks to talk about different issues to address the needs of my community, and we had some teens from the Edgewood Branches, the Boys and Girls Club, come and shadow me for the day before Thanksgiving, just to see what the life and the work of a politician is like, so they could understand local politics and learn if maybe this job would be something they want to do one day. So that was a lot of fun. And then lastly, I just want to highlight the awesome work that was done by community projects of Havity Grace, serving well over a thousand members of our community on Thanksgiving Day. I know Council President was in the kitchen, my wife and I were bagging meals and getting them ready, but I think there was well over a hundred volunteers in that room that day, making sure that people had food and, more importantly, had a sense of community on Thanksgiving Day, and nobody felt alone. So that was a really special experience, it's something we look forward to every year, and it's nice to be able to give back. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Jan Giordano?
Thank you, Council President. So as Jacob said, we attended the College Workforce Training Center, but I think more importantly is, a lot of people, a lot of kids are looking for alternative to college, this is one of those. I've preached since I've been on the council that the high schools need to look at alternative ways to bring kids, to get them engaged somehow or another, if it's some kind of basic plumbing skills or computer skills or something that can be done in the classrooms, maybe because not every kid can attend the technical school. So moving forward, I'm still going to be advocating for that. I think there's, you've got to be able to find some kind of classrooms to get these kids sparked and interested, and maybe they don't get to tech because the other classes are filled up, but they look to pursue these other opportunities, and the only way they're going to do that is if they get an opportunity, even if it's just some kind of basic skills. I mean, when I was in school, they had a basic engine class and was held in a regular classroom to repair engines. So whether it's engines, or whether it's electronics, or, you know, working on something like that, we need to look at implementing these classes to get these kids interested, whether it's working on computers or something, and not just college. As you could see, you know, Mike Rowe makes a big thing and does a lot of, you know, scholarships on people that aren't looking for college, so we need to continue that and we need to keep having this conversation about that. I'm a big advocate for that. Also, this Sunday is the Bel Air Christmas Parade. It is phenomenal. It's got a couple thousand people, lots of people there. I'll be in the parade. Parade starts at three-thirty, come on out. Christmas tree lighting is at five o'clock, it should be nice and cold. We will have snow, so if you know any kids and they want to see snow, we're going to be blowing snow. So I want to congratulate the Seamount Wright Boys Team on their state championship, one oh victory over Parkside to claim the two A boys soccer state championship. Also, the Seamount Wright Girls Soccer Team advanced to the state final, given a strong effort, but they fell to Queen Anne's in a final score of two-nothing. Furthermore, Patterson Mills Girls Volleyball Team had a strong season, advanced it to the state one A semifinals, they played against Clear Springs but fell short despite an impressive despite an impressive performance. The Bel Air Bonk Cuts, which I am an alumni of the Bel Air High School Football Team, concluded their season seven to five with a record and a three and three record within their region, placing fourth, they had a strong performance in regional play, securing notable wins against Fallston, twenty-seven, twenty, North Hartford, forty-two, three, but faced some tough challenges on the playoffs. And then finally, the Bel Air Chair Team had a standout season, they won their county championship and placed third at regionals, earning a spot in the state competition, competition at states, they ranked sixth overall. As everybody knows, I'm a strong advocate for sports, for kids involved in sports. Couple of years ago, I asked Dr. Bolson to make sure that they did not charge each kid a hundred dollar fee to play in sports. I thought the amount of money that we were giving them, that, that's something that should go away, and it did. That needs to make sure we continue that. Sports is an outlet for a lot of, for a lot of kids, it was an outlet for me, so I want to make sure we continue with sports in this county, it's very passionate to me, so. Council President, I, that's it, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. Mr. Pennman?
No comments this evening, Mr. President.
Oh, come on.
That's it.
All right, great.
He took his time.
So, business from the president, first I want to advertise again the Adequate Public Facility Meeting, December ninth, up on the second floor, conference room at six P.M., open to the public. So, for those interested, we'll look forward to seeing you. And then, on top of everything else that you've heard, I had the honor and pleasure to attend the Great Commission Christian Academy and give a talk on local government. Also, the Hartford County Chamber of Legislative Breakfast, Mr. Pennman and I were there together. The Isaac Walton League up on Onion Road, I had an opportunity there to speak to fifteen and twenty kids and their parents about decoys and decoy carbon. It was very, very interesting, the kids had an opportunity to paint some heads, and they did an outstanding job, so appreciate that. The, on Thanksgiving morning, I met the sheriff and the warden and deputy warden up at the detention center at four thirty in the morning, and we had Thanksgiving dinner with the night shift at the detention center. I appreciate the opportunity there, it was great talking to the officers there. And then from there, I went down to the Community Center in Havity Grace for the community projects of Havity Grace Thanksgiving dinner. This is the fifth or sixth year that I've had the opportunity to do that. It's amazing group of individuals that come together, and it starts, it, it'll probably start next week for the following year. It's amazing how they gather things. Pieces are donated, they buy some things, they pull everything together, and in four or five days, they bring it together to serve. Last year, I think it was sixteen hundred, this year it was twelve hundred. And they started cooking turkeys on Monday, we cooked a hundred and some turkeys Monday and Tuesday. And I got to give a huge shout out to Fred Wills, Rodney Swam and his entire family, Dward from Water Street Seafood, and many, many, there were seven or eight of us in the kitchen, but there were over a hundred on the floor packing meals and delivering meals to individuals. So it was a great event, and I really enjoyed being a part of it, small, very small part of it. Went to the Cecil County inauguration yesterday, want to give a, a huge congratulations to Adam Straight, the incoming county executive, Bob Methley, council member, returning, and then Diane Branch, I believe it is, is a new member of the council there. So, with that, I believe I've covered everything, but again, I just want to share our deepest condolences again for Ms. Bull Sodles and her family, the Kimball family, and, you know, her devastating loss. So, with that, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.